I am going to be considered the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like the record show, members of our president, there's anybody from the public who wants to make a comment to the board, they will need to go over to the table and read the script and fill out the form to make a public comment. They're right over there on the table. At the end, we will reserve about 30 minutes for public comment, but you will only get three minutes to speak on your topic. The board will not respond unless Chair allows it. After discussion was held by the board, a motion was made by and seconded by to approve the consent agenda. We will be adding item. Three, is it? Three A here? Three A. I didn't see three B, is that?
No.
Three A.
Three A. Oh, yeah, they're adding, added to extending the contract as part on one deal. So, yes, three A.
Some move.
I'll second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, blank sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay. Chase Wallace, what did you do wrong, buddy? Huh?
Nothing.
Welcome aboard. What's your background?
I'm graduating in 2003 and then worked at Ameristar after that.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. Then I applied in June, got hired at the end of September.
Okay, cool. Well, good.
Still takes a long time, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so what are you doing? What's, what's your duties?
Detention officer. Detention officer in the day.
Detention officer.
Well, you didn't see him when you were up there?
Not yet.
Well, you know, we're looking forward to having you and hopefully a long relationship with you.
Yeah, nice meeting you, Chase.
There's a lot of, a lot of places to go from there.
They'll teach you well.
So, okay.
Thanks, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any questions you got for us?
No.
You can watch us on 10 o'clock on Tuesdays, or you can come and see us. Okay?
Hey, thanks for coming in, you guys.
Yeah. Good luck. Thank you. Okay, Judge Kathleen Kildowski discussing your decision to approve the application for the use of the Park County grounds for the use of county courthouse for National Adoption Day celebration on Saturday, November 22nd, 2025.
So move.
Judge.
You, go ahead.
Well, good morning. I'm here for our annual ask for use of the courthouse to celebrate the four judicial districts commemoration or celebration of adoptions through our association with the National Adoption Day group. As you might remember from my previous, previous presentations, in about 1998, judges in California realized that they had a backlog of adoption cases and just did not have time to get those kids' final adoption hearings. So, they opened up their courthouse on a Saturday, and that idea took off. Since about 2000, courts across the country have embraced the idea of celebrating adoptions of kids who've been in foster care, who have finally gotten to the point where they can have permanent safe, happy families. And so, locally, I did some digging. Thank you to Kate for asking those questions. We have been celebrating, and you have been generously allowing us to celebrate Adoption Day since 2006. And I'm going to get you a tally closer of the number of kids who've been adopted on the Saturday before Thanksgiving since 2006, but I can safely say over 200 kids. So, we make it a party. The kids have crafts, they have face painting or tattoos. We always have a professional photographer who donates a family photo to each new family. The judges, court reporters, clerk of court, court administration staff, all donate their time on the Saturday before Thanksgiving to make adoptions happen. This year, we think there'll be about 14 kiddos from southwest Iowa who will be adopted into their permanent families. So, thank you on behalf of the citizens of Potawatomi County for making the courthouse available to us on a weekend. I always say, everybody's a winner on Adoption Day. I know some of you have visited in the past. It's, it's just a celebration. We really want to focus on the need for foster and adoptive parents, and this is a great way to highlight the real good that people in our community do for kids who are in need.
So. Judge, thanks for what you do for that. I really appreciate it.
It's a labor of love. I, I just love being able to help promote this idea.
You haven't been able to retire from this yet.
I haven't. I retired from other things. I'm still working part-time, and this is, this is definitely still on my part-time gig, so.
Oh, great.
Yes.
Great.
Any questions?
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Kathleen, we, you'll work with buildings and grounds to make sure.
Yes, I, I will reach out to buildings and grounds and for security, just to make sure everybody's not.
They've all been.
They all know. So.
Just real quick, what's the age limit on adoption? I mean.
These are kids who have been at foster care. I can tell you through past experiences, we've had kids as young as six, eight, nine months through 17 and a half. So, they range in age. Nobody's too old to be adopted. I've done plenty of adoptions of adults. Young adults still need a family. I don't know about you, but my kids at age 18 were not ready to self-launch as full-fledged adults, and they needed a little backup from the parental unit. So, yeah, it's never too late. And so, we have kids of every age. We've been through teens.
I, this is over in Douglas County. I participated in a, a, adoption, kind of a get-together for possible adoptions. They had a number of kids there. One of them, she was maybe 12 or 13, and she'd been through a series of foster homes, but she has, she was special needs. She had, she was handicapped. And it was, it was heart-wrenching because she was literally there presenting, but she was actually begging somebody, please consider adopting. Adoption me, basically. You know, and it was, it was very, very, very hard to sit through and see that, you know, see that happen. And I, I think she was adopted out, thank God, but, you know, it, she went through an ordeal.
Some of these kids have a story. I think they all have a story.
Yeah, that's, yes.
Some, some kids' route has been a really lumpy one to get to the point of being adopted, and the foster and adoptive parents have stuck it out with them no matter what, and that's what we do on Adoption Days. Everybody's promising, we're sticking together through thick and thin. Yeah.
Judge, what time is it in the morning?
Nine o'clock.
I know you.
Saturday morning, and we usually wrap up with the formal hearings about 11, 11:30, somewhere in that vicinity. So.
Okay, thank you.
Happy to be one of them. Have a good, a feel-good moment.
Yep.
Save the vote.
Who was the second? I'm sorry, was it?
Second was.
Whitman. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, blank sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. Kenny, President of Iowa Western, update on future growth of Iowa Western Community College.
Well, first of all, thank you guys, Mr. Bell, for the invite in today. I'm in the odd room, so I'm gonna try to dress you all. So, real quick, a lot of great things happening out of Iowa Western right now. We're seeing a lot of growth. In fact, we see, we've got enrollment increases. This is 12 of about 7%. When I got here five years ago, our push was, how do we grow enrollment? How do we keep our youth in our region and fill our high-demand, high-wage jobs that we continually have within our region? So, we really concentrated on our high schools. We've seen a growth in high school students taking classes by about 20% over the last five years. Now, we're starting to see them come on and continue on. Now, not only are they doing it in high school, they're continuing on with this. And we've seen the largest growth in those high-demand jobs, our career technical education fields such as welding, HVAC, plumbing, oh, uh, price and electrical, construction, diesel tech, auto tech, really in our nursing programs too. So, we've seen a lot of those needs in, in that growth. So, what we are asking the, the voters to do here in November is to pass a bond issue of $55 million. It will not raise your property tax levy rate. I'm gonna reiterate that. It will not raise the property tax levy rate because what it will do is it just continues on some expiring bonds that will happen. What that will allow us to do is first is put a new facility in for our diesel tech and auto, our automotive programs. Those are two fast-growing programs. When I got here five years ago, we had 39 in our diesel tech. Today, we have over 80, and then our auto is sitting around the same numbers, and they're sitting just a little bit over 80 right now when, when it gets to it. So, we see the needs and the demands out there. We've outgrown the space. We're in, it was built for 30 students. Right now, our diesel tech is in auto or in greenhouses and any corner that we can find to get them in there because of the needs. I mean, you guys, court rule. I mean, farmers need people out there fixing that equipment, things like that. In addition to that, our CDL program, which we started two years ago, has just boomed. You know, the need for the commercial driver's licenses out there. Right now, we're doing that training. We, we do it in every one of the counties we serve, but here in Council Bluffs, we're doing it in a parking lot of a residential hall. Student drivers of trucks and college students don't mix very well in a parking lot, but this allowed them to also have a special training kind of course for them. And then start a new program, our supply chain logistics, supply chain management. We're seeing the needs for that, and we have a lot of businesses hitting that. We've got a lot of great product in southwest Iowa we need to get out here and some to even come in, so this will allow us to do that. With that, it'll allow us to take our current diesel tech and auto and to expand our construction, our HVAC, our welding, and all those type of programs. Right now, our construction program, again, when I got here, started with about 29 students. We've got 90 into that program right now and 4,500 square feet. It's small. I can't grow it anymore. We tried, unfortunately, to, to, to do that internally, but it's been a struggle. This will allow us to move them over. So, honestly, they will be moving from their current space over to where the current diesel tech program is, which has got 11,000 square feet. So, they literally double. Every one of these programs I'm talking about has doubled their space, which then, in addition to that, allows us to double enrollments in those programs, not turn kids away like we are right now. We turned 11 diesel tech students away, and we just couldn't fit them this year. Unfortunately, they're going to other community colleges. Guess what happens? They stay in those reasons. They don't come back home. You know, if they honestly kind of follow what's happening out there, students are wanting to stay local. They want to raise their families and communities that they were raised in. So, this will allow us to do that. So, kind of three main key points. Well, then, in addition to that, we, with our high school expansion, we need to do some work in basically Shenandoah, Clorinda, and Atlantic. So, this will allow us to do some space, remodel some space down there to allow them some what I call industrial flexible training space, allow us to bring some of those tech programs, HVAC, diesel tech, in. So, while they're in high schools, they can start understanding and hopefully going into those career trades. So, this will allow us to do that. So, we're asking the, the voters to go out on the November 4th, yeah, November 4th, okay, should know that name right off the bat, and to vote on this bond. Again, it will not raise the property tax levy rate. Number two, it's really gonna help us expand and keep our youth in rural Iowa. Right now, we probably serve a little over 600 high school students in our career tech programs. This will allow us to really grow that, to allow those students to explore, career exploration or some of them. I mean, last year, we had 153 students in our region walk across my states and get a diploma certificate or a degree from Iowa Western before they completed high school, before they walked across the high school. We want to continue to expand that, to keep them in and really build the trades we need. I mean, we've seen it. You'll deal with farmers in, in needs of the diesel tech auto. If anybody's taking their car out to get work on, which I had to, a little light came on in my dash. It was 72 hours that they couldn't even look at it in between that time and then three days later. I was talking to the owner, and I said, what is going on? He looked at me, says, you were not producing enough mechanics. I said, gotcha, we're gonna keep pushing to do that. But look what happened with some of the storms recently, mending some of those and the needs to get people into repair and stuff like that. So, we'll be able to do that, keep our youth at home. So, we're excited about that. So, questions? I, that's the quick version.
Questions, yes, sir. Real quick, there was some talk at some one time, Iowa Western becoming a four-year school.
I, I can address that.
Okay.
There is, there's still talk like that. So, right now, what we're doing, is about a year ago, in fact, I was in DC, and I got a call from a legislator saying, hey, there's a bill just got dropped that's gonna make Iowa Western a state university. I said, great, but you're gonna take away our ability to offer to your program. Said, no, we won't. I said, yes, you will. Read your own code. So, that bill kind of passed on, and I got to talk to some legislators. We need the ability to do workforce bachelor's. I don't need to offer every bachelor's degree at a university, but I do need to offer what are the needs in our state and our, not really in our state, in our region in southwest Iowa. The three that I can, I'll, right off the top that I've heard from already, one is teachers. We need more teachers. How can we expand teachers? So, this will give us the ability to have a workforce bachelor's for a teacher's education. BSN, nursing, healthcare, really a lot around that, healthcare, a lot more than just nursing, but the BSN. And the other one, I've recently heard a lot from bankers and businessmen, is business degrees, you know, so people don't have to leave. If you really look at southwest Iowa, we are one of two community college districts in the state that does not have a private or a private or public four-year institution in our district. We are one of two. So, this will allow us, because we have a lot of people that are time-bound, place-bound, or don't want to leave. In fact, the other day, I was talking to a group, and a gentleman said, yeah, he goes, I wish this would have happened sooner. My daughter came out, graduated from you guys last year, educator, is at UNI right now. She would rather have stayed at home, done it here, and then come back and work in our region. Now, she'll probably come back and hopefully work in our region, but it could have been done without having to go to UNI with the cost and things like that, be able to live at home. So, right now, legislators are, we wrote two reports as community colleges. We submitted our first one. They said, okay, we like this. We just submitted another one here in October. Sat down with Representative Collins, and we've had some discussions. We do think that will go forward to allow the community college system to offer bachelor's degrees that are needed in the region. Workforce bachelor's is what I'm saying. So, that's where we're coming to my advisory boards, we're hearing it from businesses, and then starting those type of bachelor's degrees right here in southwest Iowa to support it. You know, teachers are the number one. I mean, educators are all over me, superintendents on that one. So, so yes, there is a potential. It's not done yet. We'll see how, how it goes through the Senate. If it does, the, the plan would be, it would be the fall of '27. Depends on how quick they could pass it in session. I'd even try to follow it next year, especially on the teachers' education side because we have a lot of individuals that, that are pares in our school districts that want to become full-time teachers, but because they have families, they can't go to UNI to go get their degree, don't want to do it online. So, this will allow us to educate them to become not just pares, but full-time teachers in the school district.
Appreciate that very much. I'm Mike Blunt here.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, it'll be a focus on what we need, not just every bachelor's degree out there. And honestly, we'll be charging 150% of our current tuition, which will still leave us $100 short, cheaper than most universities and definitely across the room. So, and keep our, keep our citizens right here in southwest Iowa.
Yes.
Other questions you all have?
No, I thought it was a four-year school. I had to go there twice.
For you as a doctor, right?
I gotta, hey, 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 yes. That's how bad jobs were back then.
Yeah, so, no, a lot of good things. I mean, again, as I said, our enrollment's growing. And honestly, where the enrollment's growing is in the CTE program. Students right now, we have a smarter student. You know, when I went to college a number of years ago, I think it was my fifth, maybe sixth year, I finally got a call from my father. He said, hey, we're gonna be at Pitt Street's graduation on state, and you'll be joining us. I'm like, crap, I'm out of money. I gotta graduate now. I would tell you, the students today, I mean, we got three buckets out there. Number one is, students know what they want to do and where they're going. They're gonna go on to universities. They're gonna get bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, and doctorates. You have a new third out there. It really kind of started, we, we started seeing this pre-COVID. COVID sped it up a lot more. But we have a lot of students that don't want to go on for education. They want that. So, we're doing that in high school right now. We've been able to do it. We just opened our Pathway Center in Glenwood. We've done some work in East Mills, or, uh, East Mills, in uh, East Mills. Hastings, we've done at Zurgali, we're able to do it in Harlan. That's what we're trying to do in Clorinda, Atlantic, and Chan, to allow those students some opportunities to get some career trades that they could go straight to work at right out of high school. What we have found is we're re-engaging them in education. It's not the traditional lecture education, hands-on, org-type education. So, those students who are taking those, we thought would go to work. They tend to be coming to us now, and that's what's growing some of our programs. And then the new third, I call them the smart third. What's my return on investment? If I come and get this degree, what am I going to make? How do I pay off my student loans? And a lot of those students are choosing the community college route, you know, even if they're gonna transfer on, or a lot of them are getting just two-year degrees. You know, more and more companies are coming and not requiring a bachelor's degree, just requiring two years of wholesome training. So, so we've seen some significant growth, and I think we're gonna continue to see that, especially in a time where the birth rates are down, high school graduation classes are smaller. So, the concern was the cliff affected commu, to the college system of decreased enrollments. Well, Iowa Western beat that one. We are not seeing that. Where a lot of my counterparts across the state and across the nation are seeing decreased enrollments, we're seeing increase. We're keeping our youth in southwest Iowa. We got great communities, great things happening here. We gotta keep it, keep the workforce going too. So.
Better return on investment.
Better return on investment. So.
How many employees does Iowa Western have throughout all of the campuses?
Well, we got a lot. So, on the full-time side, we're close to about 400 full-time employees. That's faculty and stuff like that. When you really go out there on part-time, on adjunct and the part-time, we get closer to about 1,100 total individuals. Some of them are teachers that may be living in California, teaching online for us, part-time, but most of them are right here within the region. So.
Anything?
Other questions?
Yeah, anything else?
We talked a lot about retaining people.
Yep.
In a number of the committees we're on, and this is one of them, amenities is the other that people want.
Yeah.
We're bringing in the good jobs. We just need to be able to retain them.
Well, I, I talked a lot about the credit and the high school student, things like that. But even on the non-credit side, if y'all don't know, we are one of the national training centers for Kohler generators. We put it on, we're renting a building on 23rd Avenue right now. So, we bring people in to get trained on the large Kohler generators right here in southwest, here to Council Bluffs from all over the nation that comes in. We're one of three regional training centers for, for Kohler. So, even on the non-credit side, I mean, Ms. George, we're just talking about dispatch, you know, I, we're already on it because I already texted my staff.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, everybody.
Because even those tech certificates to advance, I mean, current careers that they're in, you know, I've talked with a lot of bankers, or, you know, maybe as an adult that wants to go back and, you know, I've been working diesel tech my whole life. My body's aging on me, but I want to go teach it now. Okay, great. Come through, get a teaching degree with us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll have a lot of trucks out there to send people to, but pretty soon across the corner.
Yeah.
Logistics place comes in.
Yeah.
You're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna a lot. But, you know, it's, you know, everything's
going well. I mean, we are really seeing a lot of growth in southwest Iowa, and we just gotta get the education that, to bring companies and businesses into our community, and also to retain the businesses that we currently have. If there's not a workforce for them, they're gonna find a place where the workforce is.
Yeah.
So.
Damn, thanks for coming in.
Thank you guys for having me. Yeah, I still have a nightmare from last November. I was less than a half percent away from passing it. I don't have the deal, but I think we've got better communications out this time around. So.
Good.
In fact, I'm leaving here and on my way to Atlantic to do another one, and I started this morning in Shenandoah, Iowa. So, so I'm gonna have to race out of here. Unfortunately, can't stay for the rest of your meeting, but again, thank you for having me today. And if anybody asks questions, what I do ask everybody to do is get out there and tell their neighbors and friends and family. So.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
Same problems.
Thank you, Dr. Kenny.
Thanks.
I will. Thank you.
Thanks.
Y'all later.
Okay, to recognize and commend Danielle Bruce, Organization Supervisor, Disability Access Point for receiving the Southwest Iowa Planning Council 2025 Partnership Award in recognition of extraordinary accomplishments in community development. Danielle, they gave me something to read. All the talks. Danielle Bruce, Operation Supervisor, Disability Access Point and formerly Disability Service Director, S. Southwest Iowa, Mental Health and Disability Services Region. It has been a pleasure to work with Danielle for the last 11 years. First, she was the region, and now she is currently role with the Disability Access Point District. I met Danielle for the first time at a town hall meeting on healthcare hosted by the region in Shenandoah shortly after being hired as Transportation Director. That meeting turned out to be more of an upbeat on public transit than a healthcare meeting. But I learned two very important things. First, that in public transit, if you're at a meeting and no matter what the topic is, you better be well-prepared to hear and discuss transit. Second, that Danielle was the kind of person that was not only passionate about helping the people of southwest Iowa, but also she would have your back when things got crazy. And over the years, they have gotten crazy with mult, multitude of changes we have seen. But one thing that hasn't changed is Danielle's commitment to those in need in southwest Iowa. She works hard to make southwest Iowa a better place, and has always spoke up to support SWIDA and public transit in general. Danielle.
I, I was at the SWIPCO annual meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they handed out awards. Mary Ann Hanusa was there as well. And they handed out about seven partnership awards, and Danielle, you weren't able to attend that night. And I just thought it was such a special event, and they had so many good awards to give out that I thought you needed to be recognized this morning at the board meeting. So, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for what you do.
Suzanne, Suzanne has the check. She has the check.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Danielle, thanks for all your work. I've seen you in actual number of times around. Very impressive.
Thank you. Thank you all.
My, my life would be a lot harder if it wasn't for you. Thank you.
It's only even more difficult to do.
Peggy Becker, Administrator of Veteran Services, discussing our decision on appointments to the Veterans Affairs Commission.
I asked Peggy to come in because we need a couple of people on the board appointed, and Peggy says there's new code change, and we're supposed to work together with her on this. So, I asked Peggy to come in and just, let's get the conversation going, okay?
Well, it's actually in 2021, I believe, the code changed.
Okay.
Where the commissioners and the administrative director of the office is supposed to be involved in the process of reappointing or appointing new commissioners to our board. And it's that, it's 35B.
Peggy, do we interview, or do you?
You interview, but we're to be a part of it.
The, the code is across our region committee, and it specifies who has to be on it.
Okay.
And historically, in the past, it's been inconsistent with the committee. And what I mean by that is there really has no, has never been any continuity between the Board of Supervisors and the existing commission, as well as the Administrator of the Veteran Service Organization. So, our recommendation would be, as there are two Board of Supervisors that are appointed to our Veteran Service Organization, we would recommend that the two liaisons set on that committee, as well as the Administrator and two appointed commissioners moving forward.
Okay.
We want to ensure that we play a role in that, to ensure that when we're vetting these applicants that there is, they are going to. they are going to meet our expectations for engagement and outreach, as well as the new culture that we have created with the Veteran Service Organization. And I think having two commissioners, as well as the Administrator, would be very vital for that success.
I, I remember interviewing the last time that the commissioners were on the board. I, I believe they had three applicants. We interviewed, Brian and I interviewed three, three applicants at the time, and we had to pick two out of three. Uh, so I, we met out over at the, at your facility, Peggy. So is that, is that the kind of the process that we're gonna be moving forward with now, and to that?
Well, as I mentioned, in the past, there really has not been any consistency. It's been across the board, and that's what we're asking, to not only follow the Iowa code, but to ensure that the Administrator, a minimum of two commissioners, and again, our liaisons play a role in that.
Okay.
Because I can remember the time when I was interviewed by six years ago.
Two thousand and nineteen was the first time the Board of Supervisors ever started interviewing commissioners.
As it was one Board of Supervisor, and it was county employees that were veterans.
Just give me a time and place, and I'll be there, that's all.
Well, that's the decision, I believe.
And I really just wanted you to come in, to speak to the board, so we all kind of are on the same page and all have the same thought process going here.
Where, in, um, what, what part of the code does it require that committee?
Thirty-five B.
I know, but thirty-five.
Thirty-five B four.
Thirty-five B four? And that is brand new?
Uh, it's a few years old now, but this is the, this is the second cycle which you've had the opportunity to implement that code. I think the code was very fresh the last cycle that you interviewed for commissioner, so you probably weren't aware of it at that.
The, I'll take, I'll take another look at that. Is there, is there requirement for that committee?
Uh, instead it be the Board of Supervisors, the Commission on Veteran Affairs, and the Veteran Service Administrator and Director? It doesn't have a constituency, it doesn't have a number of members. Now, we would like at least two from each side, because we want some, you know, growth of, of conversation and discussion.
Okay, then.
But it doesn't require quorum in that code.
If I remember the code, it requires, uh, consultation with the Veterans Commission. It doesn't require.
Yeah, the in-consultation with, correct, you could, you couldn't design that differently. What we're asking for is, is a simple structure, everybody at once, together as a committee, make the selection. Not the board does some interviews, the commission maybe does some interviews, we talk. We don't want to have a lengthy detached process, like to, to be more focused and direct with the.
Is that, is that your recommendation? Is that your recommendation? Okay.
And then, and then they have to fit in special buckets if at all possible, right?
Correct.
So do we, which two buckets? Are we looking at two buckets we're trying to fill?
Oh, it's like five.
Five?
Period of service, uh, gender.
No, but I mean, right now, what are we trying?
Oh, two positions?
Yes. So which, which two positions are open?
Branch and, um, gender.
Branch and gender? How many applicants we got for those?
You have one that each meets each of the.
Only one in each? So now pretty much.
On the board is different. I'm talking about applicants only.
Right, so we gotta fill.
So there, there are two applicants who are well-qualified on paper, but have not been interviewed. And so obviously, during the interview process, you would make an assessment as to whether the well-qualified on paper is your best qualified candidate.
But we got, we, we need to fill branch and gender, is what I just heard.
Yes.
So we only have two, one of each for that position.
Counting the current board, we have one female on board. We have three Army board, one Marine, and one Air Force.
So what, what do we need to fill?
Out of the eight applications, we have two are re-upping, which is the female and an Army. And then we have an additional female applying, which adds to the gender if she's interview-appropriate. And we have a Navy veteran applying, which fills the branch if gen- if interview-appropriate.
Okay, so we're not interviewing all of them, we're just interviewing the ones that fit in the buckets.
You can move on from that if the buckets don't work, yes.
That's right.
Yeah.
So what are we, what are we gonna do? We got, we got the people that will fill the buckets, right? Or are we gonna move on?
So that would be the question. Would you rather interview just the top qualified on paper candidates? And then potentially have another round of the committee if those interviews aren't your best qualified candidate? Or would you like to interview all applicants and then rank them?
Well, if they don't fit in a bucket, we can't put them in there. If we got one that fits in the bucket, can we?
We can if they're the best qualified candidate.
Over the bucket.
Correct. Imagine that I meet all of your bucket requirements, and I come to the interview, and I'm a bad person. So you're not required to appoint.
Correct.
Okay.
They just give priority consideration.
Does, uh, does your, I don't have any issues with what you just spoke about. You can have two commissioners, we can have, we have two board members right there. Um, is, does that require any formal action?
Uh, it won't require formal action until after the committee meets and evaluates the candidates, and then the.
Formal action to set the committee.
Oh, to set the committee, no. We would, we would require your formal action for the hiring.
I'm gonna just, uh, I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint Brian Jav- two commissioners and the, um, administrator.
Administrator of VA for our interview team on that, on the VA.
I, I believe I'm the only veteran, I say, correct?
Yes.
Sure, all right. I, I, I mean, I appreciate being.
If that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I wanna be, I just want them to come in, so we're all.
Did you second that, Brian?
Well, no, you're changing the motion that's on the table.
Say it again, I'll second it.
Hold on.
Would you repeat your motion, please?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I made a motion to appoint Brian Shea, Jeff Jorgensen, Peggy Becker, and let the commission select their two representatives and move on with the interviews.
Yeah, good move.
And they'll bring them, the top two interviews back to the Board of Supervisors appointment?
Yes.
Yes, I believe.
You receive, that would be the action we would ask of the board, is the committee's recommendation we presented to the board for an appointment to the commission.
I don't have any issues.
Okay.
Make sure I, I got this right.
So who's the second on this?
I did.
Good.
Peggy, our current commissioners, their terms have expired June thirtieth.
Correct.
If I remember the code, they continue to serve until they're replaced. Is that correct? And they're willing to continue to serve until either they're reappointed or replaced, is that?
Correct.
All right, we're in good shape.
So we have two voting members that expired and two ex officios. So we have four total.
Well, the, the code doesn't, uh, specify or require ex officio members. We put them on, uh, because of their interest to serve.
Correct.
Uh, the quality of their applications at the last time. Um, now we only have one ex officio member. And, um, I don't know if that requires formal action to reappoint that person or not, but, um, his name's Andrew Dewey. And, um, I would like for him to continue to serve, if that's what you wish.
Our recommendation there would be to have the hiring committee also make a recommendation on the ex officio position, because it is outside of thirty-five B four, but we would require an action of the board for the appointment.
All right.
It, it's exciting that we've got this many applicants that are interested in serving on the board, and I would encourage the commission to find ways to involve them on ad hoc committees or some other sort of event, so that you can interact with them and, and keep them engaged.
So are we eliminating the expiration?
Yep, yep, we are. We're not even at that point yet.
So. These.
Motion's been totally changed.
Right.
Yeah.
These commissioners will serve four years, right?
Three.
Three years?
One of them is a two-year placement.
Okay.
Just, just real quick, uh, for the VA, is the Marine Corps part of the Navy? Or is that a separate, they consider that a separate branch to serve?
According to Department of Defense, the Marine Corps is under the Department of Navy. I was the only Marine serving on the commission.
What's the Coast Guard under?
Attorney.
Yeah.
In the spirit?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, hearing none, motion passes.
Scott, could I ask, Peggy, to talk about one more thing?
It's not on the agenda.
It, it's just, uh, information. Flag burning ceremony?
Yes, that's October twenty-fifth, Saturday, from ten to twelve at our office parking lot. Um, we've got the community involved, we've got the junior ROTC to do the colors. We've got the Cub Scouts to fold the fags, we've got the VFW and the American Legion. Susan is gonna be one of our presenters and speakers, um, the chaplain for the American Legion, and also, um, Holly Collins, our chairwoman, is gonna be a speaker at the event as well. So I've never been to a flag retirement ceremony. I don't know how many in the community have or have not, so I just thought I would open it up to the community to attend to them.
Okay, when can we expect our two new members to join us?
Could the interviews, am I setting up the interviews? I don't have the applications, so can.
We'll coordinate with, uh, HR to get all the paperwork together and set a committee date with the board members. And then we would expect that by the two weeks, end of the month, to have an initial recommendation. Availability of interviewees is also a time factor.
Peggy, a Friday or a Monday would work best.
For areas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Glad you came in.
So do we have some other ones that are coming up? I mean, because this one went way past what it should have.
Next year in June.
So should we be working?
And then the other ones are in twenty twenty-seven.
Should we be working on the next one in June?
We haven't, no.
That wasn't the question, should we be working on the next one in?
I usually send an email out in April to HR, because they're usually the ones that begin the process by.
But it takes us, it takes us four months after that, so should we not be looking at maybe January, putting it out?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Discussion and decision to approve the signing of the County Engineer Employment Agreement.
Employment Agreement with Andy Wicks.
Pardon?
Employment Agreement with Andy Wicks, I'll make that.
Yes.
All right, that's not Adam, it's Andy.
Andy?
Yeah.
That's sweet.
Oh, it says that.
Got a motion?
I'll second that.
Effective October twentieth.
Yeah, just point of clarification, are we going to also include the approval of extending the twenty-eight E with Mills County in this motion?
Yes.
I think the script has been changed to include both in the same.
Yeah, I think those are two different, two different motions, in my opinion. I was ready to make the next one if you want, but.
It's all in one motion.
That was the recommendation of.
My, my motion was to, uh, uh, approve the employment agreement for Andy Wicks as the engineer for Potawatomi County. Seconded by Brian.
I did second.
Back in, back the twentieth of twenty twenty-five, and to approve the twenty-eight E agreement with Mills County to the.
No, that's not part of it, I want a discussion on that.
It's not on the agenda.
This is the way the county attorney wanted to put it on there. We need to extend this because it's expiring to today.
Okay, uh, we have a new engineer that's starting on the twenty-first. Why are we moving, starting on the twentieth, why are we extending the contact, contract to the thirtieth?
Well, that gives him, uh, two weeks to use this gentleman as a resource and bring him up to speed on what's been going on.
Continuity?
Would we use Paul for that?
No.
We, we've contracted with Paul, but he's available if, if needed.
Uh, so we want to overlap about nine, ten days?
I just think that our interim engineer has got some things that he's been working on, and he would like to have a warm handoff to the new engineer as part of the success plan. And we've got to work around the interim engineer's time as well, and I just think it's necessary so that we avoid what we've done in the past. We've got some continuity of, of explanation.
Is it, uh, is it better to, uh, have Paul do that? Or is it better to have?
Jake's got it, Jake's gonna have it, because he's been dealing with all everybody out there. As far as all the projects and everything.
It's a nine, ten-day period, so I see, I see what you're.
I don't, I don't care what you're doing.
So is your motion.
Sure, I'll add that.
And I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, hearing none, motion passes.
This should be good.
Okay, Dixie Wilson, Accounting Tech, Auditor's Office, discussion and a decision to approve, disallow the following applications made to the Assessor's Office, Homestead, approximately two eighty-two recommended, allowed thirteen, uh, disallowed, Military seventeen recommended, allowed zero, disallowed, disable, disabled veterans, Homestead sixteen, recommended, allowed zero, recommended, disallowed, Family Farm fifteen, recommended, allowed one, recommended, disallowed. Um, Dixie, the only thing is approximately, how's that work?
I don't know why she put approximately.
Okay. So I'll scratch that from my motion.
Yeah, on my attachment, I mean, it doesn't say, I didn't set up that those were the numbers, it doesn't say approximately, so I'm unsure.
Okay.
What, um, I'll, I'll move that for you. Okay, we're discussing.
Second.
Dixie, the one that, the one that I looked at was the, uh, Family Farm.
Okay.
What, uh, what, what do we need to do? Have that parcel combined with the rest of his farm, or?
It's a roadway.
Well, obviously, it's owned by somebody.
It's an easement, probably, where the owner was at.
No, it's, it's owned by a, a farm, a, a farm company.
Farm company, not a family. Because I know when they gave it to me, they said that there was, there, there were some that were approved on there. It was, all of them were approved, but the roadway itself, um. So honestly, I would have to talk to the assessor to find out, are they allowed to? I don't know how that part of real estate works.
I mean, is that, is that a vacated road? Is it being farmed now? Um, well, I mean, it's, it's a narrow strip of dirt that's, I don't know, what, four, five, six hundred feet long? And I don't remember the width, but, um, it should be a parcel that needs to be combined with an adjacent parcel, so it's not out there on its own. I mean, uh, could it be part of a family farm? I don't know, is it, is it farmable?
That I don't.
Is it driven on? I mean.
I mean, I'm going by what, uh, the suggestion was of the assessor. So I can check into it more, um, if I know.
Does it say with the width over there?
It tells me, um.
Susan's got it right here. What's the width of it?
Susan doesn't. Yeah.
Or just give you acres.
It only tells me acres on here, and it doesn't say that the, they.
That's it?
Well, then, that's, it's probably, what happened was, it's, it was an easement. They big, somebody wanted to vacate it, they took their half, the other half used to be owned by somebody else. They didn't want to take their part of the easement, and now they own both sides. They need to take that, the whole easement, would be my guess.
That should be sixty-six feet wide, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
Um, that's right there.
So they just need to go in and do some of their own due diligence?
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to, uh, I'll talk to Joe about it. I mean, I don't have any issues with it, I mean, I just think it's a parcel out there. This, this county's been working hard to try to eliminate. This, this county's been working hard to try to eliminate things like this.
Right.
And there's no reason that should have its own parcel number. It's two acres of ground, and it's 80 acres long, which, I don't know what that dimension is, but.
I mean, it's, it's a private roadway.
Agree, it should be attached to something else, one, one side or the other.
Trainer farm supply.
But is that a, is that a section line? That could be part of it, too.
Yeah, but it looks like it's a section.
I didn't do any more.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do some investigating in that, right?
Okay, yep.
Okay, any further discussion?
So, are we going to remove that one?
It's already recommend disallowed till they.
No, I don't, I don't want to remove it from our, from our agenda, because, I mean, that's a roadway. If it is a roadway, it doesn't qualify as a family farm. I think that.
But maybe we can get it fixed, and they can reapply.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, hearings, none, motion passes. Okay, update.
Thanks, Dixie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dixie. Well, update, Jeff?
I was at the department head's meeting last Wednesday. Biggest discussion that, that, at that time, was everything happening with our AI, basically, and how it's affecting everything that we do, databases, cybersecurity, that kind of thing. It's going to be an ongoing issue, and we need to continue to be on top of that. We are currently, you know, got, got a lot involved with cybersecurity, but it's, it's going to be an ongoing issue, and David, clear that it's, it's going to be costlier as we go, as this goes along. So, that's what I said.
Okay, Brad?
I did the VA. I did the Naco Public Health, got over at Public Health. There's a meeting over there. And then I went to the RPA, MAPPA RPA meeting out at the Roads Department. I was out at Minden for their groundbreaking for their new duplexes. Then we came here and canvassed the election, and then spent the day Friday at the Rural Summit in Oakland.
Tim?
No.
Susan?
I attended the ISAC 99 County Tour presentation over at the Public Health Building, the MAPPA RPA 18 meeting, the groundbreaking ceremony in Minden for Habitat for Humanity. And I also attended the Third Annual Southwest Iowa Rural Summit. Iowa West does a really good job of putting that program together, and it was just a great event.
I agree. Quite a deal.
I attended the ISAC visit, also MAPPA's annual meeting for councils of officials, where Minden and Trainer both received rewards from the MAPPA council officials for their work they've done in their communities. And I also was at the Southwest Iowa Rural Summit. Sure.
Real, real quick, Scott, I also was up at the courthouse for election. That's on Mary Ann's, your first election that you conducted and went through, and it was a challenge, I'm sure, but you did great.
Thank you. My team's great.
Any public comment?
No.
Okay.
Your kid.
Motion, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Josh? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, hearing done, we are adjourned.